Record. I heard that. I want to call the order, the Scott WMO Watership Plan and Commission meeting for October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. We can start with the approval of the agenda in minutes. Do I hear a motion or any discussion on number two in the items?
I'll second the motion.
Oh, somebody has to make the motion, Commissioner Phillips. Are you willing to make the motion?
Yes, so moved.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a first, we have a second.
Second it.
All right.
Right, I will do.
Yeah, you go ahead and do the roll call vote. Perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner Phil?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
Commissioner Fredericks? Commissioner Fredericks?
Hi.
There you are. I saw your mouth move, but I was like, oh, it was a little quiet for me. Apologize. Commissioner Phillips?
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Barton?
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, did that just approve the both months or just July, June and July?
The whole, we just about sometime last year or two years ago, we we just kind of started bundling them all up together.
Sounds, sounds good. All right. So we'll move on to new business. University of Minnesota Resident Survey Results. How are we doing? Melissa.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, in your packet was a memo and a map and the actual report. I just kind of wanted to go through the memo. I won't go through everything, but I just want to kind of point out a couple of things of how this information can help us with the Watership Plan update. Um, so Ryan, if you want to kind of scroll to the bottom of that page, yeah, right there. That's good. Um, so we did this, this is a repeat. Um, so we, we did the survey in twenty eleven and it was a little different back then. We were focusing more on buffers and understanding, um, why residents, um, would use a buffer if they live near a, a stream, um, and, and their perception of buffers and whether they would be willing to put more in. And then in twenty eighteen, we did it again. Uh, we changed the questions up just a little bit. Um, basically, uh, because of the things that we were working on at the time, but we did use a lot of the same questions in twenty eighteen. And then with this version, it was in our plan to do this again to inform the next Watership Plan update. And we really changed up the questions this time. We did, um, carry forward a couple of them so that we can make some comparisons from the last two surveys. Um, and I did kind of point that out in a couple of the responses in this memo, but um, I just want to talk about a few of them. So I'm going to go through those, uh, really quickly. So the first point under the category of perceptions of community, um, you know, over eighty-five percent of farmers and citizens or lake residents, uh, somewhat to strongly agree that they think that their city or township, they think of their city or township as a community, and that's different from past ones. Um, and I think that's important because thinking about cities or townships that maybe we need to collaborate with them a little bit more in the future on, you know, either our education outreach uh, program or maybe even, uh, with a tax program. Um, that'll be something that we'll talk about in the next coming months on how to make some changes to these programs, even if it, or if they need any changes, but um, I'm going to skip down to, um, the, under that same, on that same page, um, page eleven of the report that said the effects of water pollution on public health are worse than we realize. When I looked back at some of the, the past two studies, and the responses in this study, actually that this is an increase that people feel that the effects of water pollution, um, are worse than we realize. And so not sure why that is, but I think this is an opportunity, um, for us to uh, maybe use our education outreach program to focus more on, you know, teaching people about what, what pollution they should be concerned about if there's something in our water resources and, um, and how they can protect themselves or, or be more informed about that. The last one on that page, um, in the study, which is on page fourteen, that water resources in Scott County need better protection. Um, we did ask that question in twenty eighteen. And it really kind of, the results kind of stayed the same. Uh, but I think this is kind of telling for our county board, um, and, and I think that our plan is on the right track of, you know, that we're being a little bit more detailed on protection and the protection focus for a lot of resources in this next plan. If you want to go to the next page of the memo, Ryan. Um, I will show you a map of this because this, we use this same question in all three surveys, um, of the water resources in my community are adequately protected. This was actually a decrease from responses in the last two surveys. So people are feeling that, you know, we're not protecting our water resources as much as we were, or for some reason that has changed. And so we want to understand why that is. Um, and in a little bit, I'll show you the map and we can kind of target where different, where these responses came from in different areas of the county, which I think would be helpful for our education outreach program.
Yep, Melissa, I will add, this one was very uniquely, um, focused in very specific areas. Uh, I, I thought that was, personally, I thought that was, um, very interesting with this particular one, which makes targeting easier, um, and then just kind of maybe trying to detail why those particular areas became hotspots for this question over the last ten years.
Yeah. Um, so with the, with the next one that, that people feel that local government should be responsible for protecting water quality, that's actually kind of second on the list. The highest responses were that, um, people felt that themselves have, have the responsibility to protect water quality, but second in line was local government. So I just think that that's good information for our board to hear, and it just kind of reinforces that we need, uh, more detail on protection. Um, the next two on page of sixteen, I think would be something that we could talk about, um, when we start talking about changes to maybe our education outreach program. And kind of building more capacity of individuals or homeowners to want to do or to be able to do conservation. The category of our technical assistance and cost share program, the only things I wanted to point out there were that, um, you know, the greater than seventy-seven percent of people are influenced by the local SWCD in their decisions about conservation. That's what we expected to see. Um, our SWCD is who works with landowners on conservation. And so uh, we definitely expected to hear that. That makes sense to us. And the last two on page under the same program, little area that on page twenty, those low numbers for, um, you know, that people would be using cover crops on their land or using drain tiles. Uh, we'd like to, well, we'd like to improve the number for cover crops eventually, that more percentage of people are using those and maybe decrease the number for drain, draining the land. Um, but obviously that would be, um, something that we would work through in the Technical Assistance Cost Share Program and Education Outreach.
Um, one more thing I would actually add before we scroll past this one. Again, this was a personal observation of mine that I felt was very interesting, Melissa, was the, um, we're talking about what influences residents, um, the SWCD, because that's what we help them do. That's what we pay them to do was number one on the list. Uh, local government was close, but interestingly enough, pretty much number two across the board, most people were influenced by their children. That's what came in higher ranking than federal government, all these other things, um, seed, uh, seed companies, all of these other things. It was actually people's children that influence their decisions about conservation more than almost anything else. So when we support things like outdoor ed and other education programs, I think it has a much bigger impact than we realize it does. And I, for me personally, I thought that was really surprising. Um, we all listen to our kids, but I guess I didn't realize everybody listens to their kids as much as I thought they did, so.
So it's really important to continue the conservation, um, in the classroom programs. Yeah. Um, lastly, the, the last thing I want to just mention is those perspectives on water management in Scott County. Um, we, you know, only about thirty-seven percent of people believe that we're effective at protecting and restoring wetlands. I think that's due to, you know, a lot of people don't know we exist just because, you know, we're a small staff. We don't really have the capacity to be out in the community all the time. But now that we have a new logo, we have new brand and we're having a new plan coming up. Um, hopefully we can increase that number eventually that people will know that we exist and know exactly what we do. So that's something to kind of help inform our education outreach um, on what we need to change. So that's all I really wanted to point out.
I think that, this is Jay Fredericks. I think that's a great point. If you actually look at the data, the almost majority of respondents, particularly in the non-farmer group, when asked all of the questions, their answer was, I don't know. And so the, the, the other answers are almost, you know, impossible to conclude anything from because that I don't know group is so large. You know, that the other one is almost doesn't have meaning. So, um, I agree that that, you know, because when I first saw thirty-seven, thirty-five percent, it's like, okay, well, what can you do to get thirty-five percent to something smaller than thirty-five percent? That's not the issue at all. The issue is the I don't knows.
Yeah. Yep, exactly. Yeah. Uh, Ryan, if you want to scroll just to that map, so we just wanted to show you what this map looks like. We are going to have the U of M create a few more. But this is kind of helpful to understand what areas of the county that people, um, you know, how people responded to that, that water resources in my community are adequately protected. The, the red areas, people don't feel that it's protected. So that would be areas that we might want to look at, so maybe some targeted.
Ask a question on this, you know, i- is there something that the staff knows of that would explain, you know, particularly down in the bottom right corner? I mean, that seems to be, you know, an outlier to the rest. There's a couple of other red dots elsewhere, but that, that, you know, that area just seems to be the, the big one. Do you have any theories or do you have historical knowledge as to why that is?
I do.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Um, I, I think it has a lot to do with the Niagara Bottling Company that came in and, and New Market Township, and a lot of people were not in support of that. Um, so, and some people are having some issues with their well because of that. So I think that that may have some influence on the results in that area of the county.
The other things I would add, and again, these are things, because we say this as a hotspot, we will investigate, right? In the plan, we will, we will go into these areas and focus more on, you know, what, how can we bring these up into the green, as you might say. A couple of other things, um, it's the Porter Creek area and kind of the headwaters of the Credit River area. Those are areas where we maybe don't do quite as much work compared to per se like Sand Creek and some of the lakes. So it is definitely an area of potential opportunity. It's also an area that, um, there's been some other conversations about like ditch management in the county and maybe just making people comfortable knowing that just because our reach is maybe not a ditch, it doesn't mean like it's not going to still be cared for and the government's still not there in a different way. So there've been those kinds of, of conversations too about abandoning ditches and maybe that's kind of bled into this a little bit. Um, ironically, Commissioner Wagner would be the one guy I would have asked. Oh, there he is! Commissioner Wagner! Um, so.
Hey, I'm here, I'm here. I'm trying to tame the kids down, but I'm listening. I'm here.
It's okay. So, uh, we were just kind of talking about our U of M survey from our residents on some of their perspectives on local water resource protection, and they helped kind of put together some maps of where those hotspots are, where there's some like, they don't feel we're necessarily, um, adequately protecting the resources and happen to just kind of notice that one of the largest hotspots is right in your little neck of the woods. So from your perspective.
I, you know, when you sent that map, I appreciate you sending it. I can actually zoom in uh, where I am and the, the very, very southern part of Scott County, I see a tiny blip of green. And I got the survey too, so I'm wondering if I'm the only one that did that. But, um, from a positive sense, I, right now, there's a lot of animosity from the local residents in the Alco New Market area with regard to the Niagara Bottling Plant. I was just at the township meeting, whatever it was two weeks ago. And, uh, and then prior to that, they had a meeting in the New Market proper, which I was not at. But, um, folks are frustrated and they see, uh, needing to change their filters on their wells and they see changes in arsenic level or, or manganese level and they're attributing, I don't, I don't know if that's the case, but they're attributing it to, um, the testing that's been done when the bottling plant started. And, um, you know, if, if the blame is rightfully so or not, water quality is on the top of the mind among my neighbors. So those are my two cents.
That's very, very helpful. You're actually probably the best person to answer how the pulse of the community is feeling right now over there. So that's really, that's really appreciated, appreciated. Does that help Commissioner Fredericks?
Thank you.
So the last thing I'll just say about this is that this is just informational for today. Um, we will be using some of this information to help uh, make decisions on whether some of these programs need, um, a little bit of tweaking in the next plan or not. Uh, we'll come back to you, um, early next year, kind of hopefully with some next steps or some, uh, ideas to, um, present to you to help inform, uh, what changes should be made in the plan. So. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Now that's interesting. Look at those hotspots and you got to wonder what the social structure is there and if they may, maybe meant at a, at the auction or something and the word got around because it's interesting how, uh, those hotspots down in the left corner there along nineteen. Interesting stuff, but very valuable too. Okay, uh, moving on to B, tax docket for twenty sixteen, Ryan.
Chair Commissioners, good afternoon. Um, so for anybody that, um, is newer, uh, I'll give kind of just a little bit of a background of our, uh, policy manual, which we commonly refer to as the docket. Uh, so the, the name has changed kind of through the years, but same, same concepts and, and, um, ideas. And I should also note, like Commissioner Barton, I'm in the middle of a cold, so I might be frequently, uh, hitting the mute button as I'm, as I'm about to cough. I don't think everyone needs to hear me cough. Uh, but anyways, uh, so this is for our cost share program. This is our policy manual that basically we set forth the specifications, um, maximum cost share rates, incentive dollars, um, eligibility criteria, approval process. So it's basically the, the document that we go to, um, when residents are looking to see whether they're eligible for our program or not, we refer to this. And it kind of lays out, you know, whatever their issue is a problem. You know, do we have a solution in here? And then that process of actually, you know, providing technical assistance or providing cost share incentives, um, to them. So um, and then every year what we do is we bring this to the WPC to get a recommendation on these changes. And, um, you know, once we get to a point where the WPC is comfortable, um, with approving it, then we take it to the, um, Scott County slash WMO Board, uh, for final approval of it. So this is the changes that are being proposed in twenty twenty-six. So I'll go through a few of these. Um, and then also there's a couple of things of note that I want to point out, uh, in the docket, but I'm not, we're not planning on going through each change um, individually. Uh, if anyone has any specific questions, we'd be happy to answer. Troy's on the call as well. Um, so what we do is this docket is basically countywide and staff, uh, meet with all the various Watership Management Organizations and Watership Districts, go through these and, um, and also the SWCD staff goes through it first. And then any changes that we've had throughout the year, like for instance, Commissioner Schmidt uh, had talked to me about a couple of items, so I want to specifically call those out later. Um, so going forward, if you have anything, you don't have to wait till the, you know, this point in the year, send it our way and we'll put it in basically a living document. So now we'll start a twenty twenty-seven one. And any changes throughout the year that come up, we just add them into that twenty twenty-seven, so we don't forget. You know, that way we keep a kind of running tally of, of things that have popped up. So um, with that being said, I'll just go through these five highlighted items. Um, so there's not a lot of major changes uh, that are being proposed this year. Um, a lot of grammatical stuff, you'll notice, a lot of clarifying language. So sometimes there's gray and gray can be good and bad at times, but, um, just kind of cleaning things up a little bit, uh, is what you probably have noticed. There's, there's a lot of the changes that are being proposed. Uh, but one item is increasing the percentage from ten to twenty-five percent for trees within a conservation cover planting. Um, that would be pending any grant requirement. So obviously if we're using grant funds, that grant's going to supersede any language and we've got that in the docket in numerous spots where we can't just, uh, blow past for better, lack of better term, grant requirements. We have to still follow those grant requirements. So even if, you know, we allow it on a local level, we went up to twenty-five percent, if a grant says zero percent, then that's what we have to follow for those plantings. Um, but the idea of that is conservation cover plantings or native grasses and, um, we feel as though, uh, you know, if, if, if people are wanting to put trees in their native grasses, there's probably a better chance they're going to leave it in past the, the term, their actual contract term. So, um, you know, we don't feel as though we're losing any benefit. If anything, we might be getting um, more people leaving these practices in without the financial assistance. So that's kind of the idea behind why we're increasing that one. Second bullet, this pertains to the WMO. However, I know like Prior Lake Spring Lake was maybe considering doing this as well. And so then it might go countywide. Uh, but this was one that Commissioner Schmidt, um, brought up. So we put this in the WMO special provision. So there's a section in this docket where if we have something different than maybe the rest of the group, we identify it there. Uh, so basically what, what we're proposing is that well ceilings can go as high as two thousand dollars for cost share as long as it doesn't exceed fifty percent of the actual cost. So that'd be an increase of a thousand, going from a thousand to two thousand dollars. Uh, the third bullet item is related to the soil health categories. So soil health would include your residue management, your cover crops and nutrient management. And if you remember in August, during one of the project updates I, uh, gave to the Commissioners, the SWCD received a grant from Bowser in twenty twenty-five for its RCPP funding. And it relates to soil health categories. And basically in a nutshell, what this is, is we had to revise some of our language to make it acceptable for a grant. We didn't feel as though revising the language earlier was a substantive change. And so we, the SWCD did make those changes in the docket. Uh, and we were just waiting to do them with the rest of these changes for twenty twenty-six. Um, what it is, is actually the cost increase for this, but our local costs go down. So, uh, they were at, correct me if I'm wrong, Troy, they were at eighty dollars an acre. So then the local end would fund potentially up to eighty dollars an acre for, um, like cover crops, for example. That's increased to a hundred dollars an acre. However, the grant will cover sixty dollars an acre. So in reality, we actually cut our local end in half, you know, goes from the eighty to the forty. So it's actually saving us some, some funds.
Ryan, just a clarification.
Yeah, go ahead, Troy.
That, that's correct. Um, if, if we are using the RCPP, which is federal funding, then the WMO's portion will go down to forty because the grant allows for up to sixty dollars an acre. If it's only local funding, we would put it at the sixty. So the, the base rate is sixty dollars, but we can reduce that for the WMO to forty when we're using federal funds.
Sure. Thank you for that. Um, next item, so the fourth bullet is we're removing the cost share for, uh, maintaining native prairie and tree shrub establishment. So we were offering things such as, you know, prescribed burns, um, in the docket. And this is where you probably know us the most strike through. Um, so we, we were offering these, but instead, uh, soil and water staff kind of came up with this idea of, of maybe offering incentives to attend some other workshops. So sort of, you know, building capacity within the landowners to take on some of this work themselves. Um, and, you know, enable them so that they can continue to maintain these practices, you know, throughout their contract term and then hopefully beyond, you know, that they can, they've been taught these skills to do the work versus hiring somebody else to do it. Um, and, you know, I, I think some of it, sometimes it's scary to, for a landowner to do a prescribed burn, but um, you know, the workshops are a really good tool to kind of lay out how to do it, how to be safe doing it, you know, what are all the things to keep in mind. So I think this is a good, a really good opportunity here for, um, you know, reducing our costs and also, you know, educating landowners and enabling them to get more involved in, in their projects themselves. Um, and the last item is the LGU cost share, uh, program. So for anybody that recalls, we started a local government unit, a cost share program. You know, it's intended for cities, townships. If they've got something that doesn't quite fit in our docket, um, more so related to like stormwater practices. Um, there's a potential opportunity where we got right now fifty thousand set aside and that's the plan for next year, two fifty thousand set aside. So basically it's just putting language in our special provisions of, you know, how much we're looking at, what's the, um, process and all that kind of uh, stuff, just because it's a little different. We wanted to make sure to call it out. Um, so with that, I guess I'll stand before I move on to the, uh, items further in the memo, I will stand for any questions, uh, so far.
Well, Ryan, it's Jay. A couple of questions. One is in, in some of the specific language that's been added or modified, there's some very explicit, you know, number tests and maybe look backs over ten years and things like that. Does, does that data actually exist? I mean, you know, so if someone is going, I can't remember the exact one, but there's one where someone asked to say that, you know, they've not done something more than fifty percent of the time over the last ten years. How will you even know? I mean, is that, you know?
Yeah.
Is that something that's a very readily recorded, um, piece of data or, because otherwise it seems like that's a very specific data over a very long time period that might be hard to actually get to.
Sure. I'm Mr. Chair Commissioner Fredericks. Um, great question. So, um, how, if it kind of relates to like, how are we holding, uh, landowners or participants as well unaccountable? We, and when I say we, the soil and water is performing, um, status reviews on a, um, periodic basis. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Troy, it's a one, five and nine, or is it two, five and nine?
One, five and nine.
One, five and nine. Yep. So when somebody installs a, a project, um, we use the soil and water, they go out there and they actually make sure that they're abiding by their operation and maintenance plan. So every, everybody's signing an agreement too, that they're going to maintain this, um, project for the, whatever the contract term is. Most of them are ten years, but some could be less, some could be more. Um, and during that status review, they would be checking things like that. So if they're supposed to leave, you know, thirty percent residue in upland or whatever the case may be, you know, they're held accountable to actually performing that. Um, and if it's not being done, it gets identified in that status view. It's notified to them and then there's corrective actions that are taken. Um, and.
So the, the one that I was, you know, I was. So the the one that I was, you know, I was looking at, uh you know, not to interrupt you, but was like, yeah, this is on the. Filter strips and it's like your eligibility is dependent on. That you've grown specific crops and they've grown and harvested in four of the past six years and that you have. You know, the eligible. Forage has not constituted more than fifty percent of the rotation in the previous ten years. I mean, these are really specific things and that's why I'm just asking, are those all readily, you know, um reported. Paint points of data, so the eligibility can be actually verified.
Yes, um so we share Commissioner Fredericks. Yes, those are um, they're in there for a reason. So that's, it's called cropping history. Um it's a common term with CRP that what what it's trying to get at is we. We're not looking to necessarily um take land in certain cases, like in that instance, we're not looking to take. You know, uh turf grass, your yard, and then turn it over into a filter ship. Where there's gonna be minimal, you know, benefits there. It's already a perennial cover. Um and going from turf to native grasses, yes, there will be a slight benefit, but a more significant benefit. Is taking agricultural land, which is, you know, um a lot of times, um you know, exposed soil. For months out of the year, you know, when they harvest till they plant in the spring. Um and so that cropping history is basically getting at, we're looking to take some of that agricultural production land. And put it into conservation, not maybe necessarily other. Land use types that are maybe already providing a a benefit, if that helps answer your question.
That's good. If you generally answered it, so the answer, I'll just repeat it back the way I think I heard it. Is where there are specific numbers and time periods and whatever mentioned. Yes, that data is, you know, regularly co- collected and and. You know, can actually be used in whatever way the language is suggesting it should be.
Yes, nope, you've got it correct. We can use our aerial photography in a little bit. I'm gonna be showing when I get to my project reviews, some aerial photography. And you can see, we have not every single year, but a lot of recent years. So if we're saying. We want to check to make sure this field was a farm field for out of the last six years, we can go back at aerial photography and we can. We can figure that out, whether it was or was not. Um if we need to take it.
You answered it. I'm I'm happy with that answer. Um so a second question is, y- you know, have you looked at with the changes in language? You know, would it have changed any, you know, recent situations? Would it have flipped somebody from eligible to not eligible? Would it have, you you know, in any of those clarifications? You know, if if the, you know, the past is. You know, the predictor of the future, is it going to change the outcome? Or is it mostly just to get rid of ambiguity, get rid of those gray areas and make it more specific?
Pro- probably more the latter. I wouldn't say it, it's not like we're getting a lot and Troy can chime in as well, but it's not like we're getting a lot of folks. That are trying to take like non-ag land and enroll it. We have had instances, uh you know, I used to work with the Soil and Water. And you get instances where somebody wanted to take a low land area. You know, of hay ground and till it up for the next four years, put it into corn and beans and then enroll in a program. So so that it it's been brought up, but I would not say that happens very frequently. It's it's sort of. You know, the 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 landowners aren't aren't taking it that, you know, to that level, I guess. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Fredericks?
Yes.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Um I should also point out that why we bring it to you in October is that if there are questions, concerns. You want to see revisions, we still have the ability to do that and bring it to the November meeting. And we can reevaluate it at that time. But if there is not, then we can actually start the process of getting it approved. So I wanted to put that um in there as well.
Um Ryan, uh do you wanna flip to page two and just kind of mention the committee?
Yeah, now we're gonna get to that. I was, I wanted to kind of see if anyone had. Questions and then I was gonna get to the committee and also the reenrollments too.
Ryan, I had one, this is.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh let's see what number, one point six A on the payment process. Have you guys run into situations where where staff don't have. Job approval authority and you know, you just feel like it's not necessary or where did that change come from?
Yeah, um Troy, I don't know if maybe you wanna chime in on that one a little bit. I can take a stab at it, but.
Sure. What what was the reference again?
Uh the JAA and whether staff are running into issues where they don't have JAA uh in certain situation.
I'm just trying to find what um specific paragraph or section.
Commissioner Barton, where did you say it was again?
Uh one point six A under payment process.
Okay, it'll help us. There's so many changes in here, it's got nice to just focus in it kind of juggling them, right?
Okay, yeah, I can speak to that, Commissioner Barton. So we we haven't had any issues with JA except to say that. Um there are certain practices for which JA is not given. And um or we maybe, let's see, um. Where we have one staff member that has JA, but maybe another staff is working on it who doesn't. Uh but has the experience and and knowledge. So the whole concept of JA is to is. It's really a um. It it's rather complicated, but it has its roots in federal programming, really, and. It was intended to en- ensure that anytime cost share funds are distributed, public funds are distributed, that. That staff with appropriate knowledge, ability and skill are are planning and designing according to spec. To reduce the um risk that there is uh that may be associated with a particular practice. Uh but back to my earlier point, uh there are a number of projects, particularly in the natural landscaping front, where JA is not even applicable. And then there are others where there's, there's hardly any risk at all to the project. I'm thinking, for example, uh cover crops. If if that fails, um there's no risk or harm to, you know, safety or public health, what have you.
Sure.
So we just want to re- relax that a bit where it wasn't that necessary and that would help improve efficiency on our side where there's no risk.
Sure. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Troy. Um any other questions, comments? Um otherwise, we'll continue on with the memo. All right, let me get back up to the top here. Um so that while I'm scrolling, I remember what it is. Uh so one of the discussion points that I just wanted to bounce off the WPC is. We offer um right now, we're currently doing ten percent of our budget for reenrollments, basically. Projects that we've kind of identified as um a good. Uh public benefit, you know, it's right next to a water body that might be impaired or. Um the the we always use the example of there was an area um kind of northwest on McMahon Lake where it was kind of. Uh very few uh parcels within the watershed to McMahon were ag-based. And this was one of them, it was right next to the lake and they enrolled it in uh native grasses. Um. And it's just kind of part of the story of, you know, the improvements to McMahon. And. That was always one where we said, well, that is a good example of maybe a project where when it does come out for. Um you know, it's contract term that we might want to go back to them and offer them and say, you know. Would you like to stay in if we we are offering X amount of dollars to you? So this, but we've also kind of, our our current plan is pretty clear. That we want to incentivize change, but not really sustain it. Um and so. It's a kind of a question, just bouncing it off, we're getting to the point now where we feel as though we've kind of told. Landowners enough more recently that there might not be these re-enrollment opportunities to where we, if we. Felt strongly towards it, we could probably sunset it at some point. Um so just basically want to get feedback from the WPC. Do you like the idea of keeping reenrollments? Um is that something you'd want to see maybe in the next plan? Or is this something that, you know, you'd feel comfortable maybe talking about? Getting away from at some point.
Ryan.
Uh Clayton Wagner here.
Do you all, do you have a way of uh, I guess, scoring those re-enrollment projects? For like from a priority standpoint?
Yeah, yep, um Mr. Chair, Commissioner Wagner, we do, we um. We have the kind of criteria, um I think it's even outlined in the docket itself, um in the special provisions. But basically, we, yeah, it's not everybody. So if we got uh native grass planting. On top of a hill and you know, the benefits are very minor. We, they just wouldn't fit the criteria of of being a priority project. We we wouldn't offer it to them. Um we we're wanting this to potentially just be, you know, those really prime, good projects that um. That, you know, we we really wouldn't want to see taken out, but um. You know, that's kind of the question is, do we want to focus more on, you know, um. Moving forward, you know, and and trying to get new ones, or do we want to try to retain some of the other ones? Um. Yeah, there's there's good arguments for both both sides.
Ryan, I may add something to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
What we're finding as we apply the the um ranking or prioritization protocol. And we get a long list with the most important on top and, you know, least on the bottom and we've just not had very good. Productivity in terms of being able to re-enroll the ones that are most important. Um it would ends up being where we're kind of halfway down the the group or even lower. And we're kind of obligating ourselves to fund that one because we have the funding and nobody else above them have. Uh demonstrated interest. I'm not saying it always, but that's kind of been the predominant experience we've had. And it takes a lot of time to uh first identify all the filter strips that are gonna expire, then go through, you know, and and prioritizing them. And then reaching out to them. So it it's kind of a level of effort issue as well.
Um Clayton Wagner here again. Do uh. Is there any, and it doesn't have to be perfect data, but any record of. The folks that do the conservation project. And then immediately turn it back to cropland or farmland or things like that. Like, how often does that actually happen?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Wagner, that is a very timely question because. Uh Soil and Water staff just investigated that. We we. So we have the, what's called the key performance indicator. And it's sort of some measures that we go off of as as metrics to see how well we're doing. Um you know, serving the public or or in our cases, you know, various water bodies or programs or anything related to that. But one of them that we wanted to actually investigate further is exactly what you just asked. How many people are actually leaving them in beyond their contract term? And so we're still kind of um putting that data together, but. We are looking at that as well. We don't know if it's gonna be a actual like KPI. But it could be just a um good information to be able to pass along to folks or. Let's say a news article, you know, I I'm just throwing out a number out there, but. Sixty percent of our, you know, filter ships stay in after the contract, five years after the contract term, something along those lines. Um so we are kind of looking at that data too.
Yeah, I will, I will add to that in a slightly larger context. Uh as you know, because our watershed management plan is being updated right now and the tax program being. A very large part of our our programming and a very important part. Uh overall assessing how well we've done with the tax program over the last, you know, plan cycle. Is really a huge part of influencing our current plan cycle. So we asked the SWC to um. Assess how the program has gone over the last planning cycle, asking a lot of those kinds of questions. And then, yes, I also asked staff uh to work with the SWCD to look at our key performance indicators, uh making sure those also align with county indicators. But seeing if we can also kind of get to the nut, the meat of the nut on those kind of specific issues. And to that end, so that we don't go too far down the rabbit hole tonight, uh and ruin our wonderful November meeting. We Melissa will be leading a wonderful workshop with you in November, addressing all of those wonderful questions. Because that's where you guys get to learn all about how well the tax program's done and provide some input on it moving forward. So yes, your timing is impeccable because this in fact does roll up and feed into November's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, way to think ahead.
And then also, I was just gonna bring up, uh Commissioner Schmidt, I left, this is the only comment I still left in the document. Cause I didn't want you to think I forgot about your question. Um but the discussion on whether we would want to stretch out. A ten-year agreement. So right now, if somebody does re-enroll, it's for ten years. And Commissioner Schmidt's question was, well, could we potentially get fifteen or twenty-year agreements, you know? Um and we did talk about that with staff and kind of the consensus was like what Troy's saying. We're already kind of going down the list, uh you know, not necessarily as getting the top target. Um and people are saying, no, you know, some of those people that are at the top are telling us, no. You know, and so trying to get fifteen or twenty years probably would just lead to. Less of them being re-enrolled. So I I wanted to make sure we at least, you know, that can be part of this re-enrollment discussion as well, but just wanted to point that out.
This is Commissioner Schmidt. Ryan, what would be, what what is their reasoning for um? You know, not re-upping. I mean, when they get into the program already, it's been ten years. And whether that's the prairie or filter strip, I don't know if you see one more over the other, but uh. Um why did they enroll in the first place? And why would they not be in, why are they not interested in continuing that practice?
Yeah, uh Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schmidt, uh it's a good question and it probably varies a little bit by landowner. Um I would imagine a lot of them that are saying, no, it's probably a financial driver. Um that they could be weighing the difference between, you know, getting rent. Um at X dollar amount or, you know, what we're offering for. Um re-enrollment and in kind of my take on that's always been, if the driver's financial, eventually they're gonna. It's gonna get taken out at some point anyways. You know, whether they re-enroll one more time or not, you know, if if the driver's financial, it's. In my opinion, I think it's highly likely that at some point, it's gonna come back out again. Um so it it does vary and Troy, maybe you got some insight too that, you know, you're hearing from staff, but. I would imagine the biggest driver's financial.
Yeah, I I would agree.
It's just, they can probably do better, Commissioner Schmidt, by, you know, renting it out at that point.
So the reasoning they got into it in the first place was what?
Well, maybe, maybe the rent wasn't as good, but you know, back, back then, um. You know, it maybe it was more competitive, you know, the, we tried to, we we tried to be somewhat competitive in in those rates. Um but you know, they they do vary quite a bit across the county and so. If, you know, what they signed up for ten years ago is probably close to what we're offering again and. And rent has probably gone up in that timeframe, so um yeah, I don't know if that helps at all.
Well, if that's the case, then I mean, we're not on, we're not able to offer to offer anymore then, so it is what it is and, I mean, or are we? I mean, are we gonna have to keep up with cost or whatever to keep programs in place? Uh and interest going forward as rent continues to go up.
Yeah, I mean, we we've got kind of a set rates, you can see them in here, um in our. Yeah, I mean, we, we've got kind of a set rates, you can see them in here, um, in our special provisions of what we're. Um, we're offering, um, but that's kind of the crux of this whole question is. You know, do we wanna keep chasing that, um, for re-Enrolls? Or do we wanna, you know, basically just say, if, if you didn't? If, how do I wanna phrase this? If the incentives initially weren't enough for them to wanna stay in it long term. You know, I think it's a fair question is, will, will there ever be that? Is that ever gonna be the case, you know, and, and that was kind of the concept is. Incentives to change behavior, that not to sustain it. So, you know. If it didn't do it right off the bat, I, I don't know if it will at some point, you know?
True. Okay, thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
Ryan, it's Jay, just a question for my edification. Do, do these agreements? Survive the transfer of ownership of the land? So whether that's within. You know, like an estate plan or whether it's the sale of land, do, do the agreements survive?
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fredericks, uh, we have language in our contract that they are supposed to. Um, transfer that over to, uh, a new owner. So they are supposed to do that, yep. And then.
Oh, in a sense, it's an encumbrance. Of sorts on the land in the, in the event of a sale.
Yes, so if they exceed twenty thousand dollars, then they do get recorded on their, uh, deed. So anything twenty thousand or higher, it's a requirement of the program to, uh, record that, so. In that case, there'd be no excuse, the new landowner should or would have access to all of that.
I just wonder if that is a potential factor in that. Not maybe wanting to sign up for something super long-term, potentially as well.
Yeah, yep, that, that could be a factor in it, yep.
Could I, could I add for clarification, something, Ryan?
Yeah, go for it.
So, uh, to Commissioner Fredericks, your, your question, the, the contract survives the transfer of ownership. But the responsibility for the, um, maintenance and any. Risk or liability for repayment for lack of maintenance. Remains with the individual who received the cost share. So the responsibility does not travel with the land, um. However, there are ways that a, a, a landowner participated program who is proposing to sell their property. Can mitigate that risk and that's probably through a private transaction or purchase agreement or something that. That makes the new owner liable and responsible to maintain that practice, or maybe they. They incorporate some amount of, uh, financial compensation to cover. The potential non-maintenance and liability that the seller might incur if the new owner doesn't maintain the practice. But I just wanted to make that clear, is that that responsibility remains with the recipient of the funds?
Okay. Good, thank you for that.
Any more thoughts on the, the re-enrollment? And, and status quo is fine too, that we can, um, leave it? All right, well, um, I guess noodle on that for, for another year and then we'll kind of see. Um, you know, if there's stronger thoughts next year, we'll still leave it in there for this year, uh, maybe come back with. Um, you know, another year's worth of data, just to kind of see. Um, I'm gonna jump back up to the memo and we'll finish it out with the, um. The committee, so in years past, we actually had a tax program committee. Uh, we're looking to resume that next year. Uh, the committee is intended to review more substantial changes and updates to the program. Um, so if all of a sudden we were proposing something big, this committee kind of gets out in front of it. Um, and you know, massages the language a little bit before it kind of comes to a meeting like this, so. The thought was we should bring that back. Uh, and just as a heads up, um, it's been typically comprised of two members of the WPC. Uh, serve on the committee and then two members of the SWCD board. And then along with, um, you know, what we currently have is SWCD and WMO staff, so. There's more to come for that, but I guess if somebody maybe had strong interest, um, we could. You know, look at, um, if you wanted to potentially be on that, that committee, so. Um, so I guess with that, I'll say in pretty change is the one thing I, I would note though is. As we go, if, if the recommendation is to approve this, um. I would just wanna make a note barring any substantial changes. So we do go through this again. And there could be grammatical things, it could be clarifying language, but, but we're not necessarily changing anything substantial. So I just wanna always make that clear is that, um. There are still minor, minor changes that occur after this, if approved. Right. Are we ready? See, I'll look for a motion to approve. Go ahead, go ahead, Joe.
Herr Barton, I would, uh, make a motion to approve them as presented in the packet, barring any major changes, as Ryan notes.
Okay, we've got a, first, we have a second.
And I will do roll, Commissioner Phil?
Right.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
Commissioner Fredericks? Commissioner Phillips?
Hi.
Commissioner Barton?
Hi.
Commissioner Creer, hi, Commissioner Creer. Oh, so there, so I'm enjoying, there he is. And Commissioner Wagner?
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners. Hundred percent.
Okay, a hundred percent, awesome. So motion carried on that, uh, fine piece of literature, nicely done, Ryan. It's, uh, interesting stuff. Okay, next on the agenda is the, uh, Troy, you're up with the information on the Scott SWCD report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the report you're seeing in your packet is actually. From our SWCD board report. Uh, I was out at a conference last week and didn't get a pared down version of this for your packet. What I normally do is take out anything that's not germane or related to the WMO and that's what I present in your WPC report. Ryan was kind enough though to get something in for the packet, however, as you can see, it does include a lot of. Um, information that may not be relevant to the WMO. As I go through some of the highlights, I'll just, uh, provide some of the WMO related items as I do. So with the tax, uh, technical assistance and cost share program requests, uh, we have around one hundred thirty-seven active service requests. At the time of reporting, um, about eighty-seven of those are actual projects. So the numbers are tailing on a little in the lower end, uh, we went through a big slug of them, uh, last year. And then, uh, earlier this year, uh, and so we see, generally see that cyclical nature of the number of requests. Um, so it's not too alarming on that. What I can point to that, that is, uh, something. Um, substantial is with respect to the soil health and cover crops. Ryan mentioned earlier about the RCPP grant. Uh, that has helped us tremendously. You can see, uh, these numbers don't reflect everything in this year as of yet, but already. We're blowing past our historic, um, numbers, uh, for this year on cover crops. So, uh, some of the impact that we're seeing. Um, is, it is, can be visualized there. Now, one thing that I noticed from. Uh, an earlier conversation regarding the survey. About forty-six percent of landowners, I believe was the number intend to do cover crops. That might, that even though that's less than half, that's an amazingly large number, uh, to be honest with you, we don't. We have, uh, less than ten percent currently. So if we can look forward to forty percent, forty-six percent, uh, that may, uh, implement cover crops, that's, that's huge. You don't see that number. It's quite rare, so, um, that's good news. Equipment rental program, uh, this is just indication of how many folks out there, the producers who are using. Practices that are related to soil health. Uh, no till or cover crops, they all use our equipment for those purposes. So that number for this year, twenty twenty-five, as of October. Is already approaching, uh, the high levels we've seen in the past, and so we expect that number to be. At or above actually last year's number as well. So that's another good news story. Um, I'll skip over to the open cost share grants that, that blue box in the right, lower right there. Um, so the WMO, we have four hundred, over four hundred sixty thousand dollars in, in awarded grants. Um, along, that's a grants as well as local general money. Uh, we've encumbered four, four hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-four, so about ninety-three percent is spent. That leaves us with a small amount. Which is good, that means we're out there, we're spending these funds. Uh, the large amount for soil and water is reflective of that RCPP funding we got, which was quite substantial. Clean water education program, we hosted our outdoor education back in September, we had eight hundred eighty-seven students across twelve schools. That's down slightly from our normal, which is above, uh, one, our one thousand or eleven hundred. There was a few schools in Shakopee that couldn't attend due to budget cuts, so hopefully that's, that's a, not perennial, but more or less a one-off. And we, um, also had one school in Jordan that didn't, that we were trying to get to, um. Commit this year that they just couldn't again, so. Overall, our numbers on youth education though are above normal or average, um, and the reason is because we're doing more. What we're calling conservation in the classroom, so there are a lot of. Um, schools out there where they are unable to attend the outdoor education field event. And so we're bringing it to them. Uh, it doesn't cover all the same. Uh, topics that we hit on outdoor education day, but it is very speci- topic-specific. And so we can reach a large, larger number of students by going to them where they're unable to attend this event. So we can report those numbers, yes, sorry.
Uh, sorry, I was gonna have you scroll back, uh, when you're done with this one, sorry.
Yeah, Ryan's controlling that, so go ahead, Ryan.
Right there, um, so I just wanted to just again draw attention to, um. Fortuitously, since we have everybody on there right now, um, this really gives a good perspective when you look at. All the different grants that we all have and are working together to get implemented, um. Within the county, uh, you can see that there's a lot of, of agencies doing their part to come up with. You know, just over a million dollars in grants. But then also kind of understand where the WMO's role is in all of those cost share grants, you can tell that we're. Um, kind of very similar to the SWCD that both of us are running neck and neck for almost, uh. Almost fifty percent, maybe forty percent each, uh, so, uh, we're moving a lot of grants, but. Individually, but then also together, um. That's, that's a lot of grant funding that we're, we're pushing through this county as a whole. And since you had it up there, I just. Thought it was worthy of a, of a notation.
Well, it's a good point. The vast majority of the funding has always been with the Scott WMO, uh, for the last couple of decades. And it's actually a little bit skewed, this report here, Vanessa, the, the amount that soil and water showing. Is normally legs pretty far behind the WMO. It's just that we got those federal funds that kind of boosted that number up, but normally the. Tooting your own horn thing is even more true for the W one under normal, normal, uh, circumstances, so.
But the, uh, tax program, we're talking about that big old docket, it's, that's, you know, looking at a large part of that one million dollars is, um. Being, um, policyed through that tax docket, so.
Correct.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
Um, the last thing I'll mention before I move on from the clean water education program is that every year we have conservationist of the year, which if you attended the, uh. The, um, tour, you got to meet those folks, uh, with the exception of Christian, he wasn't able to attend. But I just wanted to report out here that the Oldenberg, Brabek Farms were, uh, nominated by Scotland Water as the. As our nominee for the state conservation award. And they were already identified as the area four, uh, winner, which means that of all the metro counties. Um, that submitted, uh, in this program, statewide program, Oldenburg and Brabek Farms was a winner, so kudos to WMO and our landowners. And by the way, this is the third year in a row that Scott, Scott County, uh, uh, nominee was selected for the area. At the state level.
Yeah, that's awesome. Uh, and not to interrupt you quick, but I saw, uh, Mr. Commissioner Phillips has his hand up.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and members of the board, um, and Ryan, I, I just wanna say, I had the great privilege of going to one of the outdoor educations. I think it was two years ago with my daughter, I was chaperoning her class. And, um, I got to. You know, see all the presentations there, it was, I thought it was, I thought it was great. You see a little bit about recycling, conservation, uh, water conservation, soil conservation. Um, I just, I thought it was a great thing and, uh, I just wanna say, bringing it to schools that can't make it. I hundred percent support that. So, um, and you know, we, I think we mentioned earlier in the meeting how we're learning from our kids. And I think we, we do learn from our kids because, um, I don't know. Um, but anyways, I just wanted to just say that, um, how, how much I thought that. Program was, it was a real positive thing for all them, uh, all the kids who attended that, so. Thank you for all your efforts for that. And by the way, Ryan, I remember your presentation. Use the, what blew me away is how much water it took to make chocolate.
Oh, yeah.
I don't remember what it was, but it was a lot.
I, yeah, I can't recall off the top of my head either, but it is a startling, uh, number. That maybe nobody has, uh, answered that correctly so far.
Yeah.
It's higher than Blue Jeans, it's like way up there.
Yeah, so anyways, thank you for the efforts that staff has put into it and I think it's a great program and. But continues for many, many years to come.
Great, thank you for that feedback. All right, Ryan, let's scroll down, um, I'll hit the water quality, so there's a couple of, um. Uh, water quality monitoring sites within the WMO, oh. The ones that were, uh, in the WMO that were funded by MPC are under the SWAG section, there are seven streams we're monitoring. Six of those are within the WMO area. Uh, we're finished up with that, uh, seasonal monitoring. Next year we'll do the streams again, uh, for two, so we'll have two years in a row. Uh, groundwater observation well, so we collect, uh, measurements at nineteen wells on a quarterly basis. Uh, we collected eight of the nineteen for this past quarter. And then we're doing monitoring, uh, lake level monitoring for the city of Prior Lake on Markley Lake. So that's not funded by the WMO, but it's certainly within the WMO. I don't, I'm not sure, but Vanessa, correct me if I'm wrong, but is not the WMO involved in like a study or something related to Markley Lake? So there's a nexus there.
Yep, that's been completed, it, the study addressed, uh, the pumping and the opportunity and the options to. Um, manage the lake level of Markley, we can talk about it at another date, but you're right. Uh, we did collaborate with the city of Prior Lake, uh, and city of Credit River. And we do contribute, uh, uh, the county actually contributes a third towards any pumping costs that are needed, um, depending upon the annual rainfall.
Thank you for adding that. Uh, precipitation monitoring, so we have volunteer rainfall monitors scattered throughout the county. And we have one site here at the Jordan Field Office where we collect and report that data in our monthly reports, and you can see for the month of September. Our, uh, monthly total was, uh, quite below our average for, um, for September. I think, Ryan, with that, I'll conclude and just kind of stand by for any questions.
Any questions? I just did a quick Google search, it takes approximately four hundred fifty gallons of water for a single chocolate bar.
Wow.
Mr. Chair, that's startling. Yes, it really is, like, uh, I'm glad I don't eat chocolate. We, wink, wink, right? Okay, anything else for Troy? Okay, we can move on to staff reports. Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, um, I've, I've been long-winded enough with my tax, uh, talks, I'll. Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, um, I've, I've been long-winded enough with my tax, uh, talks, so I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. Um, our EPA grant, our phase one, we just received the closure document that was sent to us, um, and have received all the payment, so that grant is officially been completed. Um, so we've already started phase two of that, and I've got an update further down for that, but, um, it's great, we, we did everything we said we were going to do, and, um, it's officially done. Uh, the Pika Creek, uh, CIP. So if you recall, we were doing some maintenance work on the turf reinforcement map, and I am going to stop sharing this screen. And I'll share with you some pictures of the work, um, uh, that was done. So just bear with me, um, I'll try to keep it brief. Sorry, it's tough because you gotta open windows and shut windows. So, um, what this was, was basically uh, the area where you see with new, uh, blanket, there's actually blanket through this whole, um, area. So this is where the, the TRM is located, the existing TRM. What happened is where you see this, uh, the straw, um, and the coconut, uh, coir blanket up on top, it's the two rows here. Um, that, that area kind of sloughed, it came down the slope. Um, and the reason was we didn't have anything down below. We added this rock that you see here to kind of prevent that sloughing, um, or reduce it in the future. And they actually added, uh, percussion anchors and drove them into the ground several feet. And I'll show you another picture of what that looks like. But there's basic, this, this whole area is scattered with these percussion anchors. What it is, it's a plate that's gonna pull that blanket and keep it tight up against the slope itself. Um, this area was also TRM up in the upper right kind of corner, top right corner. Uh, but that didn't have any sloughing because we had, uh, toe protection down there. So this area was added during construction. Um, and you know, now we would know in the future if adding something like that, you know, we do also have to add that toe protection too. So we learned a little bit with it. Um, but overall for, you know, close to three quarters of a million dollar project, uh, this is pretty minor in the whole scheme of, of kind of touch-up work. Um, so I'll stop sharing that. I'll show you the percussion anchor, and then I'll also just show you, um, where exactly it's located, so you have that spatial reference to it. Okay, that's the anchor. Um, so basically they drive that down, it's like, um, um, a larger version of a duckbill anchor, if anyone's ever worked with those, it's basically the long cable. Uh, you pound, pound it down with a pilot rod, and then once you get it in place to where, you know, you met the depth that you're supposed to, you actually pull back up on it, and it, it takes that anchor from going, you know, vertical and actually pops into place so it goes horizontal, and it's just that, it's giving it more of a friction for, uh, being able to be pulled out. Um, so, and then this is kind of the, the method that they're using to do the pullout, uh, test to make sure that they hit the, get the specs that they needed to. Um, so stop sharing that, a quick show where it is on a map, and then we'll move on to the next one. So, map of Scott County, uh, we got one sixty-nine here, Seaver's Corn Maze, um, that's right here. So our project is located just kind of southeast of there. Um, and it's this ravine, I'll throw on the contours, so it makes it easier to see. So this ravine here is the Pika Creek, uh, ravine. And where that work that I was showing you is actually on the very, very upper end of that project, so. Uh, this would be the last landowner that worked with us, and that was on the, I guess it would be the first upstream landowner, I should say. Um, and so that work is kind of right, right there on their property. Um, I'll continue moving on, um. Cedar Lake Township, we've been working on a culvert, uh, where they faced, uh, beaver issues, and, uh, beavers are building a dam at the lake outlet. And so just keeping you informed, we are in the process of getting the contract reviewed, uh, for that. And, um, also the township is working with the landowner on establishing easement for ten years for the maintenance of that. Um, so both of those things we're hoping can get done, um, here shortly, uh, the consultant wants to actually do the work still this year, and we would like him to do the work as well. Um, but this is Lemon Lake. And the outlet for Lemon Lake is located right here. Um, and as you can see, this parcel is, uh, it's actually a private, uh, landowner. Um, and so it's, it's not, uh, not technically in the, you know, the public park, so we would need that easement there. Um, and they're proposing to put a fence structure that is trapezoidal in shape, and then it'll, uh, deters beavers from wanting to build a dam, uh, in front of that, that culvert, so. Um, so we're gonna see if this works, and I, I think if it does, we might have maybe an option for any future issues that are similar. Um, EPA phase two, our amendment is still being worked on, uh, just as a heads up, we are using uh, federal funds, so the government shutdown may impact the timing of when that could be completed. Uh, but we are still continuing to work on that amendment, um, and we will get it over to MPC staff to review once we've got everything ready to go. Uh, we did a assessment, uh, basically, or I should say a site, uh, visit on a ravine in Credit River. Uh, basically this ravine flows into Credit River or County Ditch Four. Um, and basically it was just kind of, um, we're, we're working with the landowners out there. Um, maybe not all the landowners are necessarily interested in the project, so, but the, there's two kind of downstream properties. I'll show you, um, here as well. I think I'm still sharing my screen, all right, am I, where you can see? The GIS map.
Yeah, we got it, good.
Okay, perfect. Um, so basically, you know, we're looking to put this into the new plan, um, but that, it's not really gonna you know, do much for them short-term, so I just kind of offered, I would walk it and just kind of do an assessment, just kind of look at it, um, see if there's anything that really stuck out, you know, I, I wouldn't necessarily say that. Um, this is, as I flip on the contours, you'll see this is the ravine right here, and then it flows into, this is Credit River slash County Ditch Four. Um, and so, you know, there's just a little bit of a, you know, sediment plume from this ravine that heads into the, the creek, um. Um, you know, not obviously great for flow through the area, but, um, you know, we can't really do much, it's not in our current plan right now to do any you know, project out here, but we're looking at adding it to the next plan, and, um, I kind of just let the landlords know, you know, we're probably gonna go a couple of years with not really, um, hearing much from me, because there's not really much we can do. Um, but in the meantime, we're just kind of gathering some data, um, that if we ever were to pursue a project that we've kind of got that, that we can pass along to the consultant. Um, and I'll, my last screen share, I believe.
And Ryan, I'll just add one more piece to that, sorry. Um, just a reminder that all of our CAPs are heavily grant-funded, so uh, as much as we would love to just run out and do an, any ravine project at the drop of a hat, uh, it takes some time to um, gather funding, and the biggest piece of that is to have it in our watershed management plan. So, much like all the other CAPs, um, it's just a matter of just getting through that process of being able to make it eligible for funding, getting the funding, doing the design, gathering the data. But in the meantime, that's really hard a lot of times for residents to digest, and we want to keep them informed that it is a process. We haven't forgotten about them, we're doing it as quickly and effi- efficiently as we can, so that's kind of what Ryan was alluding to in that.
Yeah.
Not letting them feel forgotten, letting them know that we're still working on it diligently.
Uh, here's just a, uh, an area, it's probably more severe, the erosion in this stretch, um, I didn't put a tape measure to it, but if I had to estimate, you know, these side slopes are probably fifteen plus feet, maybe even twenty plus feet. Um, it's, it's really high and it's vertical, um, and you know, nothing's gonna grow on a vertical slope, so. Um, so yeah, I guess there might be more to come, but just wanted to share the results of just, you know, letting you know, we're looking at this, um, if any questions were to pop up, so. Um, I got one last update, um. So I, I think we talked about this before, where we were looking at the potential land sale of a project that we did, um, we purchased some land for a phase two CIP that we did back in twenty seventeen, I believe. Um, and just letting you know, we've at least initiated that in a process, you know, we had, we'd always said that at some point we were looking to, oh, we'll look into selling the land, um, and we just kind of kicked that off, so we're, we're learning as we go, I've never sold land, uh, before, um, for the county, so, um, for the WMO, and so just letting you know, keeping you, uh, informed, and without a second for the questions.
I would only add, for those newer Commissioners, the WMO generally does not strive to own land. We may have some really long easements, uh, did a grant requirements that might take thirty years, but we're really not in the business of owning land. So for us to own a piece of land, um, it's pretty rare, so that's why we also don't really necessarily know the process in selling land, because of course, we don't generally own land, so.
Any other questions for Ryan?
Okay, Melissa, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, okay, my voice just disappeared, I gotta bring you back up. Uh, really quick, just a couple of updates, uh, survey season's over. Um, I was extremely busy this year again with watershed plan update on phase two, so we hired Blue Water Science um, to do a lot of the surveys for me. I don't have all of those reports yet or the invoicing, but I did send them a reminder email. Um, so as soon as I have those, I will, um, provide you an update on, on some of that information. Uh, the camp program, the lake sampling program, I picked up all of the lake samples and the kits from most of our volunteers, I have one more to coordinate and pick up from, um, McMahon Lake, but as soon as I get that, then that'll be, um, done with for the season. And then my last update is on the watershed management plan update. Um, as Vanessa kind of, uh, brought up a little bit earlier, our, our next big topic to go over with you is the technical assistance and cost share program. So our plan is to have an in-person workshop in November for the WPC. It, it'll be a joint workshop again with our, um, the Scott SWCD board. And we'd like to have that at, um, the SWCD office, we think that'd be, um, fun to have you be able to see that. Um, Troy has completed an assessment of the program, um, and will, we will include that in the November packet for you. Um, it, it will be interactive again, so we'll have some exercises for you to do. Um, and some questions to answer to kind of help us inform if the program needs any kind of modification, so. That's all I have for updates.
All right, thanks, Melissa. Any questions for Melissa? Or Ryan? And I gotta say thanks to Ryan, I forgot to say thanks to Ryan, and Melissa, thank you too. A lot of work was, yes. No problem, no problem. Okay, uh, next up is the administrative report, Vanessa.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I just actually have a couple of updates. Um, first of all, uh, like Melissa said, our next meeting is going to be an in-person meeting at the SWCD offices, that's at the fairgrounds, uh, it's in the building at the fairgrounds, kind of that main one, so if you haven't been in there yet, that's also the location of the extension services. So it's also kind of a fun little building to visit, plus you'd also get to kind of see where the SWCD offices are if you've not seen them before. So it's also just kind of a, a, a great opportunity to get out and maybe see something you haven't seen before. Um, we will conduct a little bit of business, very, very short meeting ahead of time, um, to go over like the budget for twenty twenty-six, that's when the final budget is brought to you guys, recommendation before going to the board, um, but that's maybe the only action item necessary, and then we would just move into the workshop. Uh, we promised to bring lots of snacks, lots of good things to drink, maybe Commissioner Wagner's, uh, family might be dropping off more snacks, who knows? Uh, but we promise to make you feel, uh, well-fed, uh, we'll have food, uh, lots of beverages, uh, promise to make it worth your while. Um, so that's kind of what's coming up on that one. Uh, second again too, I can't, if you could just, uh, oh.
So this confirming, that's the twenty-fourth of November, is that the day?
Yep, thank you, Commissioner Fredericks. Uh, the, the second one, again, just a really quick reminder, uh, if you haven't reached out to let us know your preferred contact method, uh, just if you like texts or calls or emails, please let us know, we always want to make that as easy for you as possible. Uh, so if you haven't gotten back to us, let us know. And then the third one is a kind of a fun thing, it's come across my desk again, this is something that comes across my desk on a rather frequent basis over the years, um, I'm gonna share my screen, uh, Ryan, could you stop sending? Or sharing? All right. All right, perfect. So hopefully you all can see this, I thought this is also very appropriate for the time of year, it is October, that is not pureed pumpkin, it looks like pureed pumpkin, which is why I thought it was appropriate for October. But this is actually what we often get a lot of calls about, especially at this time of year. Uh, it's, their calls are always coming from like a pipe or something near a pipe or a culvert or a wetland. Um, there's always a wetland adjacent somewhere nearby. Uh, and the reason why we get this call is because you've got this gooey, orange, pureed, opaque gunk, just gooey stuff floating in the water, and people are obviously concerned, maybe somebody's dumping something, you know, is there some sort of chemical spill, what's going on? But in fact, this is actually a naturally occurring process, this is actually the, um, byproduct of kind of an ir- iron oxidizing bacteria, and it's always associated with wetlands and generally pipes. So wetlands are kind of funky in that obviously they're anaerobic environments, because with all that water, it's just not a lot of oxygen. Though that creates a lot of iron oxidizing rust, you'll see a lot of wetland soils, you break them apart, they tend to be kind of red and rusty. Well, it turns out on this great planet of ours, there's been this bacteria that's decided that this is actually a great food, which is kind of funny, um, but, uh, as it digests that food, it also produces, um, a really delicious, ucky, um, gooey orange mass. So what it really is, it's just the byproduct of this iron oxidizing bacteria. Um, either, and a lot of times the reason why it happens around pipes and culverts is because obviously a lot of those are metal inside, and so if it's in a wetland and it's a pipe or culvert, or it's just near a wetland in general, you'll often see this slimy pureed pumpkin, it is not coming from the Barton Pumpkin Farm, I promise you. Um, they're not pureeing their pumpkins, uh, so, uh, it's a great kind of Halloween thing that comes up a lot, it comes around the desk a lot this time of year. It's just something fun I like to share, works great on pub quiz nights, um, but it's a natural process, the nice thing is when the bacteria is able to consume and kind of process the additional iron, it doesn't, it no longer is locked in the soil, so it's allowed to just naturally dissolve through biological processes, so that's great too for water quality as well. Looks weird, but anyway. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
I have something, Vanessa.
Go ahead.
Um, this is Commissioner Phillips, um, I just wanted to, I don't know if this is, I, I realize time is short right now, but um, if we have a moment, um, I just would like to bring up, uh, something I was thinking about, um, since we met on our field trip, was it a month ago? No, it's two months ago. Um, when we met with the Lake Association and the, um, Conservation Award winners and had the, the field trip. And something that I was thinking about was the Lake Association, um, they had some feedback for us, and something I heard loud and clear from them was um, was the fact that they felt that there's a lot of weeds in the lakes. And I realized there's weeds in lots of lakes and, um, and I know we have the AIS inspectors out there periodically um, throughout the summer, and that's great, love it. Um, however, they can't be there all the time. And I, many of you may know I'm a active boater and a fisherman. I use a lot of area lakes, and I was at a, a lake recently, I was on Lake Minnetaka, and I came across this boat, boat cleaning station had a public water access. And I use it, and I actually seek these out, because for me, it's a lot easier to clean my boat off, and these boat cleaning stations, they, um, they do a lot of good things, I think they make it easier to get the weeds out the boat. Um, you know, including, uh, you know, the, the AIS species we're trying to keep, keep from lakes, um. And can I, is it okay if I share? And can I, is it okay if I share my screen real quick, Vanessa? I got a picture of it, people want to see it. So let's see, how do you do that? Oh, here we go. Screen share. Oops, I don't know, window, here we go. So there's a, there's a boat cleaning station right there. Can people see that? I don't know if you. Well, it's, it's a simple one, there, there's fancy ones, there's, there's simple ones, there's all kinds of various ones. If you look at that picture, it's kind of basic, but it, it does a great job. There's a little salad tongs on there, maybe I call it a salad tongs, but it's about a three-foot tongs. And reach under your boat and get them weeds out easy. Personally, I think people don't clean their boat off, they don't spend the time they need to. There's a little light on there, you can't really see it, but there's a little solar panel on top. And there's a little brush, I don't really use a brush much, but people can use a brush. I like the salad tongs is my favorite tool, you really can reach around and get them weeds off. So I was just wanted to start a discussion, and I wanted to just bring this up at this meeting. And just see what people thought about possibly looking into the idea of putting, I'm not saying every public water access we have. But maybe just starting with maybe the most used and just seeing what the feasibility and the cost and, and what would it take to install? Install one of these. Personally, I like to, I really like them, I'm a big advocate of them. But I realize money's tight, and you know, everywhere, every jurisdiction is, it's tight right now. And maybe this isn't the year, but maybe we could afford one or two. And maybe, but this could be a long-term thing. But I was just wondering if I, if staff would be willing to, to see what the feasibility of installing these in terms of, is it even feasible? Can we get permission? Could we get some, we get some partners in this? County, you know, SWCD, I don't know if that would be, but you know, other conservation, that maybe the Lake Association. But essentially, kind of look into what partners that we would potentially have here. But I, that's, that's what I wanted to bring up, just the idea of possibly installing, looking into the feasibility of, of, of installing a boat cleaning station at, at least starting with their most used lakes. In our, in our watershed.
So absolutely, Commissioner Phillips, yep, this is exactly why we appreciate having a WPC. Because you guys will come up with these ideas that maybe just haven't really occurred to staff or we haven't looked at in a while. So staff will definitely look into this, and we can bring it back to you at another WPC meeting. Probably will be November because of the workshop, but it would be one of the early meetings in twenty twenty-six. We can bring you all the different things associated with it. We don't know much about them at the moment or the costs or anything. I know Melissa probably has, but hold on, we'll get to it at the next meeting when we bring it up, I know. Since we haven't really talked about it, but we will definitely bring that all to you at another meeting in early twenty twenty-six, if that's amenable.
That'd be great. And I, I know everyone's busy, and I don't mean to give you more work, and I don't want to stress anybody out. But if it could be worked in at some point, that would be, I, I think it'd be great to just at least start the, start the conversation.
Commissioner Phillips and members of this committee, I, I kind of like them. But with any good idea, we need to know the price on them. So if there's, I think that's what you're probably talking about, Vanessa, is if we can get a price on these.
And all that, yep.
Yep, then it's the animal you know versus the animal you don't, I was gonna say enemy, but animal you know versus the animal you don't, right? Bruce has got his finger up, let's go Bruce.
Yeah, we just put one in on upper or lower prior in Sandpoint Beach. And we worked with the DNR to put one of those in once. We, we redid the ramps there too with some funding from the DNR. So if you contact our staff, they'll give you the information, what it costs and the funding participation and the process, so.
Nice jump on, Mr. Looney, thank you, that's awesome.
Mr. Chair, can I just make one comment quick?
Oh, go ahead, please.
So I have looked into this for many years, and I can wait to another meeting to give you input. But the reason why we haven't put one on any of our lakes is because the DNR only allowed them to go on lakes that had a zebra muzzle infestation. So now that Cedar does, can revisit it. But that's why we haven't put them on our lakes, because the DNR would not allow it. Because they're all DNR-owned accesses, unless that water body had zebra muzzle infestation.
So it'd have to be on private property, that makes sense, okay, as I say, how does the DNR control that? Is there access, okay, I get it.
We'll, we'll look into all of the different pieces, get updated information and bring it all back to you for sure.
Good stuff.
That'd be great, you know, the DNR, I, I would just respectfully say, if we're trying to prevent things from getting into the lake, you know, let's maybe not wait until it's in there to prevent it. And who knows what other things we could prevent from getting into this lake? We had these AIS species, we, they seem, they kind of seem to be more and more every year. But we could be preventing, we don't know what we're preventing from getting in there. But it's just, I thought something would be a good use of, you know, WMM, WMO dollars to preserve these lakes.
Absolutely interesting stuff, I like it. All right, thank you for that, Vanessa, anything else?
No, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, you can, if you're comfortable, or you can make a motion to adjourn the meeting, and I can do roll.
We'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
There we go.
It's like Commissioner. Frederick seconded, okay. All right, I will do roll. Commissioner Thill?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Commissioner Fredericks? Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Barton?
Aye.
Commissioner Creer?
Aye.
And Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners, we look forward to seeing you in person with lots of delicious snacks and lots of coffee in November.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.